Hello, everybody, and thank you for joining us tonight. Obviously, my name is Mel Reposo, Council Chair. We have Janelle, our council staff is here. We have Eddie, our council staff is here, and Lyndon, our deputy county clerk, is here as well. So we're here tonight really to listen. You know, I'm not here to tell you what I think or what I believe. I'm here to really listen. We're going to go across the island. This is the first one, and we're going to go across the island over the next couple of months. Basically, to listen to issues and concerns that you have in your communities. Our budget session, our budget cycle starts in March. March 15th, we get the administration's budget. By the way, the administration should have a representative here as well tonight. And we wanted to get some information from you all so we at the council level can better participate in the budget process by letting the administration know what we believe is needed in the different communities. You know, we don't know what we don't know. The council doesn't know what we don't know. And oftentimes, we get blamed for all the problems, but the fact of the matter is, until one of you come to us, we don't know. And I think for a lot of people, and I know this because that's what people tell me, they have stopped calling for help because nobody answers the phone, or they won't get a call back. So this is an opportunity for us on the council to simply listen, and that's why we have staff here. Janelle is one of our analysts. She's actually a legal analyst. So we will take your concerns. We will formalize the concerns, and we'll send it over to the agency, the appropriate agency, whether it's local, state, or federal, and we'll track it. So you don't have to be worried about who to call, because that is a big problem here. You call a county number, and they'll tell you, "That's not us. Please call this other agency." And then you call that other agency, and if they answer the phone, they'll tell you, "Well, you know, that's not really our Kulianna. You need to call this agency." And then they get so upset that they just call the county council, and then we deal with it, and that's not an issue. So we enjoy doing that. But we wanted to set this up so that we can hopefully find out what the issues are, whether it's a pothole, a drainage issue, trees, whatever it is, so we can send it off to the appropriate agencies and get you the answers that you folks need and deserve. I did a little social media post from the January 10 meeting that has pretty much gone viral about, you know, we all pay taxes, and the taxes pay for government, and our government is supposed to fix the problems without giving you a runaround, and that's what a lot of people get. So hopefully, this will help a little bit, and at least the council will understand the issues that are needed, whether it's playground equipment, whatever it may be, and we'll do our best to get the message across to the administration and into the budget come March. That's really all I have, and I know we had some people concerned about why is it only Mel Reposo and not the county council? And see, the Sunshine Law is a really horrific law. It's a rotten law. It's a stupid law. The Sunshine Law, I mean, I shouldn't say that, because the law is a good law. I believe in open government. I believe in the requirement to post agendas six days in advance, and I agree that all our votes got to be in the open, and I agree that all amendments and all that got to be in front of the public. But what I disagree with is the prohibition of having any more than two members of the council at any community meeting or any event. That makes no sense. And the logistics to have the seven council members here with the proper staff and scheduling of these facilities to get the full council here with the six-day notice was just very difficult to get it in time before our budget process starts. So this wasn't intended to keep the other council members out. This is a very open, public meeting, but just the Sunshine Law prohibits us from having any members here. It's crazy. So write to state legislators and tell them, "Allow the council members to show up at community meetings, because we want to. We really do." So with that, we can start. How would you, sir? You want to start?
Beer or...
Whatever. And then, so our staff is here, and they have forms. So I'll address whatever issues you have here. I'll try my best. If it involves us pursuing something different, then we have forms here that, very simple, contact information and your issue, and we will handle the rest. Okay? So do they need a mic? Oh, you got to come up here? Okay.
Thank you, Mel.
And then just, I guess, face the camera.
Yeah, yeah.
See your beautiful face.
Did a break. My name's Carl Imparato. I live in Hanalei, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and I believe the Hanalei Taiana Community Association, since these are concerns that have come up at our meetings often and all. I have four concerns I want to bring up that I think are related to budget. There's also some other concerns. One, two of them relate to parks and recreation. And the first one is non-enforcement. Non-enforcement of the commercial boating rules at Black Pot. As background, the counties' parks and recreations permits require that commercial tour boats get loaded and unloaded in specific places, and it prohibits loading and unloading, for example, in the swimming zone next to the pier. And the permits also require that permities take no more than 30 passengers per day per permit. And so three days, last May, eight, three days, I go out there to try to get data, and indeed, you know, all the boats, the two companies, two of the three companies that are there, they're loaded and unloaded all three days in the swim zone. Thirty-nine passengers, that's nine over the limit, 36 passengers, 42 passengers, 43 passengers, 44 passengers. This is blatant and repeated violation of the county's permits, and it's been reported to Parks and Recreation by my sub, by Mackay Watch. And zero enforcement, zero consequences, continued this kinds of violations throughout the boating season. So, you know, as a budget issue, either I think this county council either has to investigate whether there's insufficient funding for enforcement, or whether Parks and Recreation's enforcement funds are being misused. So that's the first Parks and Rec issue. The second is maintenance. There are signs at Waoli Beach Park that indicate the park rules. They're not down. They're sitting on the ground next to the bathrooms, and other signs that talk about the dangers, you know, you don't go in the water because of the rip tides. You can't read them at all. So those signs need to be replaced. And along the same lines of maintenance, there is no long-term maintenance. I've lived here for close to 25 years now, and I have not seen one new tree planted at any of the parks here. Our parks are the way they are. They're a legacy of all those that were planted in the past. We need to put money in to basically replacing trees that are dying so that our successors will have nice parks. So those are the two parks issues. Third issue has got to do with the fire department and the North Shore ambulance, and, you know, as I reported to county council in December, the data shows from 2014 to 2018 that there's a 20-minute response standard, and it's supposed to be met 95% or more of the time, 5% non-response. For Hanalei Taiana, there was 41% non-response, and the legislature funded an additional ambulance to address the problem, and AMR put that ambulance in Hui. So we still have seen nothing done to address that problem response. So in light of AMR's hostility to addressing the problem, the only credible solution seems to be that we should bring the advanced life support and transport services into KFD, into the fire department, just like on Oahu, just like on the Big Island, either as a pilot project or maybe for the whole island. Nadine Nakamura, our representative, in July of 2022, said I should count, contact Chief Gibson, because there was something in KFD's strategic plan regarding looking into this. The fire chief never got back to me on all of this. There's no response. And so what I'd like the budget process to do is require that KFD address this critical problem, either by directly funding a North Shore ambulance for the fire department, or working with the state legislature to get money transferred from the state to the county. But in any event, the fire department should be asked as part of the budget process to look at the problem and remedy the situation, one way or another. And the last issue I wanted to bring up, and it's sort of the flip side of the budget issues, property tax structure. And as you know, the county now has the authority to put tiering into place for a property tax. First, so many million dollars or whatever, your home's taxed at one rate. The second, it would be taxed at a higher, a different rate, a different rate. And what I'd like the council to commit, at least during the budget process, is to either not implement such tiering for the homestead properties, or if it does want to implement that, to work closely with the communities regarding the disparity impacts, especially for the North Shore, and to consider all alternatives. For example, tiering might be appropriate where the higher tiers pay actually a lower rate than the higher rate. But this is something to think about, and I would hope that the county council will, if it looks at tiering for the homestead properties, address this issue with input from the communities rather than sort of make a decision without adequate input. So those are the four issues, and I really appreciate your being here, Mel. I appreciate you having these meetings, and, because I know we're talking to someone who's going to do something about it, even if you don't agree. Thank you, Mel.
All right. Yeah, the tiering structure wouldn't impact the homestead or the owner occupied. It would be for residential and any of the other classes. That is a new process that we're going to be addressing this budget year, so it's going to be an interesting discussion, because there's a lot of moving parts when it gets to tiering and thresholds. It's going to be interesting. So, yeah, that is. We did have Mr. Jeremiah Agualara from Delar, yesterday, at our meeting, actually, actually on Wednesday. And there were many, many complaints about what's happening on Hanalei. In fact, Mr. Kagawa had some photos. But we will definitely address that, and even at the county level, the conditions of the permits, that the permits can be recalled. But I would really appreciate if any of you witnessed these things happening, and you take a picture, or just date time and let me know, and just shoot it to me. Shoot it to me. I'm positive, and then we can pursue it that way. Definitely maintenance at the parks, you know, that's something that, I see Janelle is writing about 100 miles an hour over there. Definitely, we'll look into that with the trees. AMR issue, that one's a little difficult, and, you know, I did actually talk to Speedy. He's the guy in charge of AMR. I just saw him at the legislature opening, and we discussed having the ambulance put back in Hanalei. That contract, as you know, is still, hasn't been awarded yet. I'll be honest with you, I think it would be really difficult for this county to manage that, just because the complexities of first response, like an ambulance service, but just logistically and cost-wise. But, you know, if we're not getting the results that are specified in the contracts, then that's something we definitely got to look at. But I think we got to work at our legislature, and I'll be honest, the state would probably want the counties to take over the ambulance service. They probably would want those counties to take over the schools. They probably want us to take over everything. But it's just, you know, we are very limited, and honestly, it's, you know, if we take over something like that, we want to be able to provide a better service than what the state is providing, and I don't know if we're capable of doing that right now. I'll just be honest. When we get to first responders, oof, that's a big task. But I definitely agree that ambulance should be here. I think that response times that are specified should be met, but we will, we'll look into that. We will. Anyone else? Sir?
Mel?
Yeah. You got to come up here, because we are actually live on the weekend right now. It's like, oof, you're a star, Mr. Trent Jones. You're a star.
I'm just part of your galaxy. Thank you, Mel. First of all, I want to thank you, one, for being here, and thank you for our friendship.
You're welcome.
And Mahalo for all of that. And I want to also tell you that you did do what you said you were going to do. We asked you personally that the trees along our area needed to be pruned, and they got pruned.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and it was just in time, and it was just in time, and I got more than pruned, man. They look like sticks now, you know? It's like a hurricane, Aniki came by again, and it's great, because we had this terrible wind a couple weeks ago, and we believe that you just got pruned in time, and you did, and the county did respond to our request. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And as far as the other things in Vekki Road, as you know, two years ago, our neighbors had a fire, and two homes burned down, and that continues to be a concern along Vekki Road. And I also want to thank you, because I understand the budget to fix the pressure, and the waterline is active as of this month. So I have two thank yous, that's all, and no complaints.
Oh, really? Oh. Yeah, that's the kind of like, that's the kind of like. You know, when the administration gets a memo from a council member, it tends to move quicker, and I'm trying to get the message that we want the thing to happen when the constituent calls. So when you call Parks or Public Works, that it doesn't have to, you don't have, you shouldn't have to wait a month, or two, or three, and then you run into a council member at the store and say, "Hey, by the way, you know, I've been trying to get these guys to cut these trees," and that shouldn't be that way. So, you know, hopefully, like I said at the meeting, I think it was January 10, I said, "If we have to put all of the issues on the agenda to get a response, we'll do it. We will." I get all day. I want one Wednesdays, so once a week, I have all day, but I want to be able to set up a system where you call, you get a response, and the issue gets resolved in a relatively reasonable timeframe. So thank you. Anyone else? Please?
I don't need to come up there.
You got to use the mic, though.
Dave Stewart.
Yeah. Sorry.
Just to mention something about the boats. I'm not in that anymore, but I was in it for 40 years. Started in 1976, and I think, honestly, the county has got to step back a little bit and let the state and the Coast Guard run the ocean. That's their job. That's not you guys' job. And all these folks do is walk through the park. They do nothing else in the park. And the county wants tax clearance. They want this, they want that. They want to make sure your Coast Guard certified this and that. Has nothing to do with anything to the county. So I'm just thinking, it's a lot easier for you guys to let Department of Land Natural Resources, Division of Ocean and Boating Recreation do their job, and you got to step back a little bit. As far as the swim, the swim zone is 100 yards on each side of the pier. We tried to get that amended a long time ago, because it doesn't need to be 100 yards on the north side of the pier. But see, this is not a county issue. This is a state issue.
Right.
But to me, a safe distance would be 50 yards, 150 feet with a rope and balls and combs, so there's nobody going inside there, because the kids jump off the pier, and they go about 10 or 15 feet, and that's it. That rule is designed against the boaters, because that's the only open area, and then it's reef. So you can't go, they would like to go a little bit over there, but conveniently, the 100-yard stops, and then it's reef. So when the river mounts closed, they can't go over there. But anyway, I could get into that forever, but that's just...
We'll get to seven, so...
Yeah, but actually, if I could wave a wand and change one thing in Hanalei, it would be this right here, Resolution Number 50. I think you might be aware of it. Ron Cochi wrote that, and that is for looking for a new road out of here. The road we have now is not going to last. I talked to every engineer. I've talked to all the people that work up there. You know, seven years ago, they put 30-foot nail spikes in there, and it came down like pudding. Now they're putting 70-foot spikes in there. Ain't going to make no difference, because it's all unstable. And so we, you knew who helped us with this was Kaikaheli, and he went to Ron Cochi, because he said it's got to start, chain of command, it's got to stop county, state, and then federal, because we have to go through wildlife refuge. And so I hear now that maybe they're going to try to maintain that service road going up the power line. Yeah, right across the bridge.
Yeah.
And that would be good, because it's really hard, like when the landslide came and everything, to bring people across the river and go up that road, especially if you got old folks, or impaired folks, or wheelchair folks. It's really, really hard. So we asked him if they could just start the process, try to get the money allocated to start a study, and get the engineers to figure out the best way to make a road going out. And to make a road just like that road kind of seems like not the right idea, because that whole mountain, that whole ridge line all the way down is pretty much the same material and unstable. So I don't know if they need to make just footings and have like a bridge road, you know, above the ground with just three big footings going up. I'm not an engineer, but, but if I can give this to you guys, I made an extra copy for you, because in there it says that you're supposed to be notified, but I don't know if you were the chair a year ago.
Not in 2022, no. But nonetheless, I mean, yeah, let me just so I can... First of all, the boats, I agree, that's a state issue. I mean, the enforcement part is state. I'm not aware of the permit requirements that traverse the park. I wasn't aware that they require all of those things, so I'll follow up into that. You know, safety for me is paramount, and that's kind of, we shared with the Delar guy yesterday on Wednesday, was, you know, we got to make sure that, two things. Number one, safety first, and that the second part is, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but, you know, our local kids and the families that want to use these resources that are ours, that should not be compromised by any corporate or commercial entity. That's just my personal opinion. But we got to be reasonable as well. There has to be a balance, and I don't mark the boaters as being bad guys, like, you know, hotels, or turbos, or whatever. I think everybody, there's a place for everybody, but as it relates to the harbors and the piers, what is reasonable, and what is the balance, and what is going, where is it going to, where do you put that boundary so that our local community and families are not displaced or not allowed to enjoy their resource because of commercial activity? That's just my personal opinion. As far as the highway, you know, it's kind of like the landfill. You know, as long as I can remember being on the council, I have been advocating for the solid waste solutions, and no one listens. No administration has ever listened, every single one of them. And, you know, they try, and everyone thinks that landfill will, one day we wake up, like the highway, one day we'll wake up, and all of a sudden, we're going to have a new roadway. It's not going to happen. We had the Department of Transportation at our council meeting recently, Ed Smithen, the director, and you would think that after Maui is fired, that we would put a little more sense of urgency on the North Shore, because on the west side, you can go cocaine. You can go upland. You can get away from the water. The North Shore, a lot of people are going to die if we get a tsunami, if, you know, if we get a natural disaster on the North Shore. I don't know how people are going to get out of here. And yet, in fact, Mr. Kagawa and myself, probably six years ago, eight years ago, went to Congress and tried to get Congress to at least see the importance of examining a new, we need a new highway. You know, some people oppose that, you know, "No, more highway means more cars." Ways up, people. The cars are already here, and it's a way of life. It's a fact of life. And when we cannot evacuate our people, when a natural disaster occurs, people are going to die. People are going to die. And so I share your pain. I don't remember this. I wasn't here, but I will, I'll call Ron tomorrow morning. I may call him, depends what time we get out of here. I may call him tonight and see, did that task force, was that task force ever set up? But we got to start looking at some alternate routes. We do. You know, it's going to cost money, but, you know, it'll cost money, but you got to buy it, right? And it'll be more expensive next time, next year, than it is this year. So we got to get started. And in the west side is the same. I mean, we got to, we got to find alternate routes of travel, even if it's only for emergency purposes. We got to, we got to get started, so thank you. Got that, Janelle? Anyone else? Okay, Mahalo. We, you get the timer? Hey, you have the timer?
Three minutes.
Thank you, Mel, and thank you for coming. He drove fast, I think so. I know when he left, why do I... Thank you for coming to Hanalei, and thank you for starting with us. I'm sure it was just a map thing, but thank you for doing that. I am thinking that you were wondering why I wasn't there when you had Dobar at the council, and I wasn't there because the agenda item was for small boat harbors. We are not that. Hanalei is just a bay. It's not a small boat harbor. So the jurisdictions are different, and the reason the county is involved in somebody traversing, transiting, is because it's in the special management area, and that's a law that cannot be ignored or put on the side, and the county can't say, "We don't want to do it there." It comes from the federal government, and there has to be a permit issued for any use, for commercial use. In fact, that is a commercial use. They're walking from, they're supposed to be walking from a shuttle bus to the shore, actually, to Vekki, to the end of Vekki, and loading there. That's the plan, and that's what their permit says. I remember making the 100-yard distance on either side having to do with young surfers, as well as those jumping off the pier. I remember that rule having to do with swimmers and families on weekends. We used to have camping. I remember it was more related to the activities that were directly related to the campground. So I remember the process. If it's time for another look-see, that's fine. That's appropriate. But I actually came tonight to talk about parks, and I feel like I'm piling on, but I've been at this since, I don't know, three or four years now. Mackay Watch, we've been providing really good data, pictures, and video, and me calling. Dave knows. Dave. And I'm up to here. I'm frustrated. I'm a big fan of Pat Porter. I really am. I think he has us in his heart, but this isn't working. And budget-wise, I think it would relate to more enforcement officers, and I know that's a challenge, hiring anybody is a challenge, but at least providing some training for the ones they have, because I will tell you that they call me and say, "What's the rule about?" Aye, aye. So, or they don't call, and I wish they would. We need to know, they need to know the rules. They don't know the varied rules they're supposed to be enforcing. Fact. No fault of their own, but training needs to be budgeted, and then they'll have to do it. They'll have to issue a report about what they did or didn't do. And our parks deserve to be available to the public, to all of the public, and not taken over by private enterprise. I wish they only walked from the shuttle to the boat. They don't. They stop, they camp out at a couple of the picnic tables. I have video. They, the permits are very clear of what they can and cannot do. None of those rules are being followed, and the excuse is, they don't have enough friendships. Then my answer is, resend the permit. Until you can show us that you can enforce a permit that you've issued, resend it. Can't do it here, because we can't enforce it. Maybe I'm being a little black and white, but to me, that's the way the world goes. I think that's me. I think that's me. Good luck with Dobar. We don't get a lot of cooperation. One of the things that Dobar says, they report to DoCare. DoCare doesn't do anything. DoCare says there has to be a sign. So for any rule to be enforced, the public has to have been informed of that rule. The sign that says 100 yards is there, was there all last year. Still no goal.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, the county across the board is struggling with staffing, I mean, like restaurants, like hotels, like stores, so it is an issue, and we can fund as many ranger positions as we would like, but we cannot fill them. As far as the training, we definitely will follow up on the training and make sure that they are trained, but, yeah, it sounds like the problems are rampant. As far as rescinding permits, that obviously, we could, but we'd have to pay them, because we're taking away a right that we had granted them and the ability to run their business. If we went and said, "Okay, we cannot enforce, so we're going to take back your permit," yeah, it would come with a huge cost, so... No, we have to. We just have to do a better job with enforcement. We have to do a better job with maintenance. We have to do a job, a better job with what we, what we need to get done, so... Mr. Chain? Mr. Chang?
Thanks, Mel, for coming up. Just want to continue with Davidson. People who lived down here after that landslide, it took three days for food to come down here. This door, I mean, all of our staff went and helped and stocked the shelves, opened the door, and it was like gone in a day or so, and the frustration, there's no fuel, so to speak, down there. We were empty on gas, you just couldn't drive anywhere. So the emergency road, they can look at the road, as a kid, I remember going up there, and it wasn't that steep, so I think it can be done, it's just, we need to at least start on it.
Thank you, and I can assure you that we'll follow up on this and, and find out where we are on this. Again, I think Maui, Maui should have taught us a lesson, and, you know, we forget fast. But we definitely got to make sure, so I, I'll follow up on this. Anything else, anyone else?
I'd like to compare with them, I think they can look at that emergency road, talk of Kauai solution, valley solution for an event which is inevitable, that would be a good thing. And Ron Tochi, I know, is very helpful, and he can help, and he's elected here, and he's a major power in the Senate.
Yeah, so he is the major power in the Senate, and, and he, he introduced this resolution. And it really, for those of you that are wondering, it's, it's requesting that the Department of Transportation convene a task force to conduct a feasibility study on alternative, alternate emergency access routes, and a second bridge to serve the Hanale, Waipai, Haiana communities. So I mean, I, he, it's, it's, the thing is, this resolution, like our resolutions, have no power, right? So we're asked, he's asking the, the Department of Transportation. So, I mean, maybe we just got to elevate to the governor and, you know, put the pressure on the governor and the administration of the state.
Or maybe our next mayor.
I don't know about that, but, again, this is going to take the state and the federal government to, to accomplish some highway projects that we need. So we will definitely move in that. And I will be in DC in February, that's why there's no meetings in February, because we go for our legislative conference, which is where we, as a council, have an opportunity to sit down with our delegation and others at Congress. So I can assure you that this is going to be a topic again, but it is, you know, it's.
So on that point, that's going to be, that's going to be in DC, and those people will listen. We did have a huge national infrastructure bill passed by the Congress and signed by the president, and then they devolved that, sent that money to the states. So obviously, some of us are trickle down for this purpose.
Yeah, and we have been receiving, and as you know, I mean, we have some major infrastructural issues on this island. And, you know, the mayor really focused on the last budget on infrastructure, on deferred maintenance. He, he did some really good things with, with our debt structure. He paid off debt that we, we could pay off for the long-term benefit. And this is, I think this project here, the highway project, really has to be led by the state. I mean, it, it has to be a state highway. I am encouraging Congress to make it a federal highway, like a US highway, name it, whatever the heck you want, name it. I remember when Tulsi Gabbard was the, at Congress, I said, we'll call it the Gabbard Highway. And I remember talking to Basie Hiron, we'll call it the Hirono Highway. We'll call it whatever name you want, you know? And still no, no road, so, I don't know what next.
You could have done, we'll call it the Mel Highway.
A proposal.
Yeah, a proposal, yeah. All right, Karen Diamond.
Thank you, Mel, for coming out here. It's great that you came out to Hanalei. You know, you mentioned Maui, and one of the things that we really learned is that evacuation and the inability to evacuate is a really crucial manner. And, you know, out here in the Hanalei district, more than half the vacation rentals that exist on the island, the non-conforming vacation rentals outside the visitor destination area are right here from Hanalei to the end of the road. And no matter that there are tsunamis and floods and landslides, and there is no infrastructure whatsoever, no police or fire, or there is nothing out there, we host a tremendous amount of visitors, and there's no way for them to evacuate. And so, for one thing, I want to thank you for the resolution that you introduced last week at the council for amortization. And I want to just tell you how important that is to happen before we have a tsunami, before nobody can evacuate. And it's the exact wrong place to have made a resort. And, and so, and it also takes up more than 50% of the housing that exists for people on the North Shore. So I hope as a longstanding problem that that can be rectified before we have a disaster. And secondly, our, both of these issues are policy issues. Our shoreline setback ordinance is the strictest setback ordinance in the country. It's, won awards for being one of the best shoreline setback ordinances, but almost everybody gets an exemption, and we don't have, we don't even adhere to state law and do certified shorelines. The county instead decides to let the landowner mark where the edge of vegetation is, and that becomes the line of an approximate shoreline that they measure to wherever a house is, and that's what the setback is. There's no public participation in our coastal zone management, which is supposed to really have a public participation component to make it work. And so I'd ask for you to bring those issues up at council and try to fix our policy issues so that we really do have the strongest shoreline setback ordinance that actually protects our shorelines in our coastal area and the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the shoreline setback law was Joanne and I that really put that together many years ago, got a lot of flack for it, and without enforcement though, and if we're creating variance, then why even have the strongest or strictest law? So I know Karen, and I will be coming out to go examine some of these properties, but. Yeah, it's, it's just, it's a policy issue, and, you know, the council sets the policy, we create the law, and in the law, you know, variances are allowed, and you would hope that prior to issuing a variance, that, you know, community is involved, and all of these things are involved. But the manufactured vegetation lines has always been a problem. People grow out their vegetation and pretend that they own that land, and use that as a calculation for the shoreline setback, and that should not occur. That should not occur. And if you look at the definition of the shoreline, it is the highest reach at the highest surf. So whatever is there when the surf is lower doesn't matter, it's where was the high surf during the highest surf? And that is where the shoreline is. So, yeah, we will, if we got to revisit, maybe we got to, I don't know, maybe not allow variances. You know, maybe not allow, maybe remove the opportunity, or, or have the variances come to county councils. See, county council is elected. So if we screw up enough and we give away variances, we, we get unelected. Planning Commission, they're not elected, they're appointed. So it's, the, the level of accountability is a little different because council members got to do pretty much what the, what the communities want them to do, yeah. So we'll actually, Janelle, we will work on that and take a look at the ordinance.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, these aren't variances. It's written into the law that they can get all these exemptions. And so the basic ordinance is written in a way to provide exemptions for people. And to date, I think the only variance that has gone through was one on the light pack for the county. Nobody has even applied for variances, because the variance part of the ordinance is actually written well. But the exemptions that are written into the beginning of it are what creates the ability for the county to give exemptions to the law.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything else?
Yeah, show me my notes.
I'm going to apologize and talk about the stops.
Oh, go ahead, don't apologize.
But don't you, sorry, I was dropping into the sun. My name is Sunny Bunyan, and I'm the one who has the Jarvis House when he was a principal, and she was a primary teacher, and then they had a third teacher before the tsunami. So that's where I am in Huineha. One of the things that's always bothered me is the bus system grew slowly, but sort of steadily, and then stopped. And it stopped at, right across, originally from Princeville, and now right here. And we have all of these electric vehicles that are being encouraged. We have the Princeville bicycles that are electric vehicles. We have people pushing their crams because they're staying in shape on the highway. I think we need another couple of bus stops further in to the far north. And equally important, my office was across from Charlie's place in Hanleitown, right up the street, right across from where the bus stop is there. And the rain that we do get, there's no shelter. Just like here, I have pictures of people in walkers trying to get out from under the front door and with the bus. There's no shelters. And I talked to a colleague of yours on the council, and he said, more bus stops can be built, but they have to be built with what was, is now the ones that power the green metal ones. And the green metal ones are the ones that are not going to help us out there. They are too thin. We have trade winds with our rains, so when it's pouring down, we get poured on if we're walking, and it's the same as walking if you're in a very narrow shelter. I've talked to the Rotary Club of Hanalei Bay. Our last good project was reviving the pier, we called it the Safe Pier Project. We built the first building in here, it was the Rotary Club of Hanalei Bay. It's a community service organization, and we've been asked as members to find out the next community service for our club. And one of the ones that's been brought up is a partnership in the county, like the one for the Safe Pier in here, and get bus stops further out, as well as getting, what's Karen's word? An exemption. Get an exemption from the contract that one of the council members told us required all new bus stops for being the green metal ones that are thin. And less we can put them on private property. And so I do consider looking at that contract, make sure that's what it says, I'll be glad to contact you. And if there is a way to give away where if the rest of the community appeals, the bus stops further out would be safer, more convenient, as expensive, and more comfortable. I think the Rotary Club of Hanalei Bay would be awesome. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, we always like community partnerships. I'm not aware of a requirement that they have to be the green ones, I, I'm not. I do know that when we construct bus stops, it has to be ADA complying. That's the only requirement I'm aware of, I'm not aware of, but we can definitely find out. Yeah, and the bus system right now, I, I think, you know, Celia, our director over there, she's done a hell of a job, and the problem we have is the lack of drivers. We don't have bus drivers. We had to end, stop the Sunday service, which was, it's a shame, but it's no fault of the department because they just don't have drivers. They, they're looking for bus, if anybody wants to be a bus driver, please come apply for the county. They get paid really well. You get to drive in an air-conditioned bus all day long, and, yeah, that's, that's the big problem right now. We just, the staffing, we cannot, it's sad. When Celia came and spoke to us about ending the, temporarily, until we can get staff, the Sunday routes, you know, she, she didn't want to do it, but there just was no, no option. You only have so many drivers, they all have to sleep as well. And, yeah, so I, I will definitely look into the partnership and find out about this requirement for green buildings. I'm not sure about that.
If you can do that, maybe we can get the Rotary Club to sponsor a training program with those.
Yeah, that would work.
We could work with John on Zonta and the Lions.
You know, the state had the same problem, so all of our kids, you guys should know this on the North Shore, your kids that have bus service went to the school, which I think is criminal, but that, you know, the state, what could they do, right? They didn't have drivers. So Roberts, the tour bus driver, I saw the ad, and they were, they put out an ad, they were going to pay you to train you to get your CDL to drive these buses so you could drive the kids to school. What, I wish I was available for that. Because my God, you know, CDL, you get a CDL, that's worth money. And, and they offered, they were offering that for quite a while. I'm not sure how many people took them up on it, but can you imagine, paid to learn and, and get your CDL as a result? And then have a job driving the school bus? Correct, correct, and, you know, so we, we, yeah, we just, I'm not sure where everybody's working now, or what, what are people doing that's not working, I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know, but is it because there's nowhere for people to live?
That's one, that's one. Yeah, that's one, that's one, one reason. But I, I can tell you, I know a lot of people that are living here that aren't working, that could be working. And, yeah, we're, we're losing the opportunity to attract employees from outside because there's no housing. The, the people that are here, I'm talking about the local kids that are here, and like, you guys, you guys got to go to work. You know, you got to go to work. Everybody wants to be a YouTuber or a TikToker and make the instant money, and nobody wants to work anymore. So that's a problem that's, and you know, I was just in Oregon, in Portland, and they're having the same problem in Portland. Everywhere you go, there's big signs, signing bonuses, please, help wanted, so it's not just here. Something happened, and, and a lot of people are just, but yeah, housing is definitely a huge, especially like out here on the North Shore, I mean, who is, who's going to drive from the other side of the island every morning to come work out here because you can't find housing out here? Oh, I thought I saw your hand go up. Yeah.
Quick comment on her comment on the bus stops. How about bus stops for the kids? You know, we live right around the corner here, and my four kids went to school, graduated in Kapaa, stood in the rain for the bus, and now they got to stand, and then my 10 grandkids stood in the rain for the bus, and it's been going on for generations and generations and generations. And seems like, you know, the mail stops at Kilowea, the bus stops stop at Kilowea, the gymnasium stops at Kilowea, and poor Hanalei, this is what we get right here. This is ours, that's it. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know what happened to, to Hanalei, but we feel like we get left out of a lot of stuff. I'm okay with the mail, but I'm not okay with the kids standing in the rain. So if you could do something along with the bus stop, I'll vote for you for mayor.
The, the, one thing I hate when politicians say is, oh, you know, that's a state issue, you know, blah, blah, blah. I mean, we will be the conduit, you know, but I, you know, to me, I, I don't see how, how much a bus stop costs. And I understand now, when you build any structure, it has to be ADA compliant, that adds quite a bit of money. And, and that's, that's one of the regulations that we cannot get around. So I, I, you know, I remember catching the bus when I was, you know, in, in elementary school, and we never had bus stops either, and, and I wasn't living in Hanalei, I was living in. But, you know, we would find somebody's garage, and that's where we would wait. And then when the bus came, everybody, all the kids run, all the kids run to the bus, and after school, they all run back if it's raining. I, I think, you know, it's, yeah, I agree. It's just getting the, the state to build bus stops, especially where it's wet, where in the rainy areas, you know, like here, like Hanalei. So I, I guess, so the bus, you're saying the bus stop, the last bus stop for the North Shore is here in Hanalei? There's no more, there's no bus service out to?
Well, if it weren't for Joel, the Hanalei Initiative is taking the initiative to have our local residents from Huineha, Haiana, you know, to be able to get to this stop, and then it goes from there. But speaking of kids, our kids that go to Kapaa. Sorry.
I was going to do cheap for a little while, but then, yeah.
You can do it.
I mean, when we talk about the kids, again, that's that transfer. So, I mean, you've got kids that are taking the school bus from my place. So I mean, you've got kids that are taking the school bus from my place in, in front of the market. And then they catch a school bus, but if they're going to Kapaa, right? I mean, I have these kids, these high school kids that work for me. And it's always like, how am I gonna get back to Waenihana? Right? Because they're taking public buses and then might catch the shuttle here. And then to get up there, like it's, it is nuts. It's, it's not healthy, I don't think, or safe. It's stressful. And I feel like you see a dropout rate. I feel they give up a lot. It's frustrating to watch them and they really wanna do, that's, I mean, you're seeing more of them go to online. Now finally I'm seeing all these boys, they're like, I'm just gonna take my GED. They just can't do it. And some of their parents can't do it either. It's, it's hard when you have a kid that wants to do it. Maybe the parent isn't as motivated, right? So you have that kind of thing, but anyway, back to bus stops and kids.
That's why we're here, right? And we don't know what we don't know. And that's why coming out is so important because I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't realize the bus stopped here, you know? No, I hear him. But I thought maybe when they went out, they turned right. Huh? So, yeah, I mean, that's a discussion. Again, a lot of it comes down to the resources, the drivers, if we can, we can expand routes. So we'll have the discussion, but no guarantees. Because I already know it's difficult to maintain the right, the routes that we currently have with the resources that we have. And I'm not talking about financial resources because that's, you know, most of our buses are funded by the federal government. I mean, we fund the workers, but we just don't have the bodies. And until we get the bodies, it's very difficult to expand the service. But, you know, the school in Kilauea is gonna be opening, hopefully, the new, the new school. And that'll take a lot of load off of having to have these kids go all the way to Kapaa. I mean, this, this, North Shore should. I had a school a long time ago, I mean, the high school. And I cannot imagine what it would be like to get up, probably at four in the morning, I would guess. Some of these kids gotta get up at four, four thirty in the morning just to get to school. Yeah, I mean, I just cannot imagine how you expect these kids to learn. And then having this, you know, they're, they're on the road for hours and this, so I wish, I wish.
You drive from sports to after school.
Yeah, I cannot.
No after school bus.
Anymore, that's depressing. Go ahead, you gotta come up though, you gotta come up.
No, did I, was the sidewalks through Hanalei?
No, we didn't talk about it.
A state though, yeah?
That's a state.
A state.
State. Yeah, a state.
Next time I'll bring a state representative, I'll make it.
Why not?
I was just wondering if the, we talked about the sidewalks through Hanalei. I like to walk a lot and I'm scared to death too, so.
Do you want the sidewalk?
Yes. 10 years ago.
We'll, we'll follow up with, with the state on the highways.
No, on that issue?
Yes. Maybe Carl has some enlightening information.
Deal. State Department of Transportation has a project that's supposed to start late next, late this year. Let's see. And anyway, includes a walking path from basically not all the way to the dolphin because you gotta get past that little valley there, but close to that direction all the way to Anaya. And so it'll be a four-foot wide walking path. And I mean, there's some issues there. How are they gonna slow the traffic down enough? Because everyone's tearing through there at 35, 40, walking path right next to the highway. But we'll work on that. But in any event, there will be a walking path.
Thank you, Carl. I'll bring you to it next time. They can do what they did in Kapaa. They put those speed tables right there by the North Kapaa Town. That really helped the speeding, that was a racetrack. And then now, yeah.
We're waiting on, we already have ours approved in front of the market. We've just been waiting almost two years. They put the sign up and put a plastic bag over the sign finally. It says speed hump.
Full promise.
Yeah. We don't have striping either, so that's, that's not you, that's the state.
It's all coming.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what happened to Blackpot Park Plan?
The Blackpot Park Plan, the master plan.
Three times fast.
I cannot, actually. We did get the briefing and they are working, the Parks Department's working on, there's some issues, some legal issues that are still going on, that are, that are kind of holding it up. But yeah, we can definitely get an update. They are, they are working. I know it was quite disappointing because we purchased that land a long time ago. But, you know, there's some issues with the, the transfer that gotta be cleaned up. And it's, what we were told was that it's, yeah, it's a land, it was, it was an error in the language. It was not, it wasn't any kind of, it was just the, the transfer had an error in there that needs to be corrected at the land court. But it's not something that is being disputed, so it shouldn't be an issue. But I can definitely follow. If you folks want, Janelle has been diligently writing all your issues down. But if you stop at a table and put your name and your contact information and the issue that you're interested in, we'll get back to you directly. So when you get out, just put, just go fill it out and talk, you know, Blackpot, Black Pot Park Plan. Then we can get, we can get you an update in the next week or so. But yeah, that was the last we had heard. But they have it online now. Parks did a great job putting the thing together.
Yeah, a lot of us in this room were on the.
Yeah, the community engagement to me is the most important thing. For me, because then I said this on the floor, I don't live out here. So I, I don't have one way, what I wanna see out there. I don't, I'm not out here. So it's a community that should dictate what happens with that park, whether there's camping or not. Some people want all-out camping, some people don't want camping. Some people want, you know, different things. And the Parks Department's job is to go out and try to find that balance and come out with a product. And yeah, they did. And it's once, once we get that legal issue remedied, and I'm glad you brought it up because I honestly forgot about it.
It's the same reason that the Overlook hasn't opened.
Yeah, what's up with that?
The title, the title.
The fastest built overlook on earth.
I know.
The last Semantics built it.
Yeah, so I mean, so yeah, if you guys want the follow-up, just please, just please fill out your information.
Just gotta do the paperwork first.
Yeah, I mean, and again, it wasn't oversight. It's just, it's just one of those things that we're trying to get it done.
Well, we want it right.
Absolutely. And that's kind of, but we wanna, we wanna get it done in a reasonable time as well. Before it's no longer appropriate, you know? Anything else?
Yeah, until sea level rise.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're right.
Hi, everybody.
This is easier than coming to a council meeting, right?
I would, no, this is my room. No, but I dare. So I grew up here and I moved home so that my children could grow up in this fabulous place. And I absolutely can't stand it anymore because you can no longer camp anywhere. You can't park anywhere. You can't, the bus thing is real. I'm a teacher at the high school. They are exhausted. I mean, at least the hours should change for maybe that. But I'm here mostly about public access and the no peaks that has occurred. So you used to be able to drive along the road and look at the ocean or at the beach. And now everybody has walls up and there are no more peaks. You cannot look at anything they see. And they've put in a new sidewalk at Princeville, but no peaks. They have completely blocked the plateau view. My, I grew up in a home that is next to an old pedestrian easement that was taken out in 1982 by Hurricane Eva. And it was just casually, not officially transferred to, there's a utilities paved path down. And people have been using that to get access to the beach, which is great. But now all the neighbors and all the renters wanna come to this old pedestrian easement that literally has eroded away into nothing. They are going to step into tall grass and fall to the bottom of the cliff. And the people that live there know to stop and they look at their sunset and then they turn around and walk back. But I see a lot of tourists that don't know what they're doing. And they are fumbling around in some dangerous territory. So I think that the county easements need to be better marked, better signed. And if they are not safe, they should perhaps be made safe or perhaps not relocated. But there needs to be an alternative route, just like the road. And then also, I do miss camping. Anywhere, like I miss being able to take my family and wake up by the beach. And then in terms of the busing, it's real, it's a phenomenal service. It has been such an addition to the island. But there simply aren't enough seats often on the buses. And certainly for our younger students, it was kind of scary. They were having to come across that highway, which is when we need the flashing, kids crossing. But I do feel that there's an inequity in who is enjoying our natural resources. And it's not myself, it's not my children. It's, and I welcome everybody to come and enjoy Hanalei with us. But can't we just look? At least let us peek-a-boo or let us know where the secret path is instead of hiding it behind a big tree or? I don't feel that it's heading in the right direction, but I think that things can be resolved. The Blackpot Park is an excellent example. I think moving the vehicles off the beach was fabulous, even though I know there are many people that disagree with me. However, it's become the Riviera in some ways. Oh, I know what it was, surfing and surf schools. I am baffled by how many people that don't know how to surf are out there with great big, huge surfboards when little kids are playing in the shore break. And it seems dangerous to me. And I always ask them and they always show me their purbit. And where are those people parking? Who's giving this lesson? Who's gonna take care of the kid? Who's just gotten banged by the surfboard? I don't quite understand how those two merged. It's really, I guess I'm thinking of Pavilion, it used to be my favorite beach. Now, again, I don't enjoy it anymore. I go after dark now because it's no longer accessible to my children or I. There's big blue things floating all over the place. But yeah, so from the bluff of Princeville coming down, it's hard to find access where there should be. And I do think that the road is a very real issue. And everybody here, I'm so glad that you guys have come before me and done all this. And I'll try and step up a little bit more. In terms of the CDL thing, excellent idea. We just got a driver's ed teacher back on campus at Kapaa High School and it's a very popular class. So I think that if people knew that that sort of thing could happen again, it would be fabulous. Okay, thank you, I'm a nervous wreck.
Thank you. Yeah, in your case, if you could, before you leave, make sure you fill out the form so we get the location, the exact location of that easement and then we'll, we'll follow up on that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, camping and, I think the, we get many, 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 many complaints about the surf schools and how they're unsafe. A lot of these guys are, it's not safe for, for the kids in the water. So, you know, again, it's, it's a matter of enforcing and getting enough people out there to be, you know, we almost need to have full-time rangers and enforcement out on this side. Yeah, so.
Is the park ranger? Really an idea.
I mean, you know, again, it's, it's hiring them. I mean, it's not like they're not trying, the ads are out, they're, you know.
Everybody wants to be in Hanalei.
Yeah, well, I don't know, we'll, we'll see.
Pay them more, hazard pay, Hanalei.
Worker shortage is a global thing.
It is all over, it's all over the place and it's.
Housing is real. I have tried to get one of CPR units for the Rotary Club and I have never gotten that call back. I have written, I have called, I have done everything, it never got called back. We have agents that can help, you know? And we just can't.
Yeah, but you know, because you know, for us at the council level, we really, we really need the exact specific information address and so forth. So Jimmy? So, oh. Really?
Yes, really. So the, the rules for Hanalei Bay for surf schools is eight schools are permitted by both the county and the state, Dobor. Dobor regulates the ocean part, county regulates the park part. The rules say where they can park, where their customers can park, that they have to be shuttled, that they have to be shuttled in a vehicle that's labeled, that they have to have first aid training, that they have to have emergency equipment with them on the beach. So eight schools, four students, each instructor. It limits the hours of the day. The last one can be at 2:30 and that was in respect for our children. I know, I know, see they're, I don't know if you can see the heads going this way, but it's just an enforcement issue. The regulations are good, the rules are good. It's just an enforcement issue.
Yeah, when I was driving out here in front of the golf course, there's a 40 mile an hour speed limit sign. You know how many cars go more than 40? I mean, it's just, it's again, but again, it's staffing. And we gotta find more people to work. Would love to see the North Shore kids, the young adults come out and, and, and work.
We hire kukuna.
That, yeah, yeah, that would work, that would work. Anyone else?
Hi, Gabrielle, I own, I'm working at the market like my mom. A big one that I've been sitting on, the parking situation at KA has been amazing for residents, for visitors, but it has severely impacted everything down line. Which we knew was gonna happen. Is there some sort of permitting system available to residents and resident cars? So I know in Huntington Beach, if your car is registered in this area, you have free resident access in designated parking between this tower and this tower, right? But is there a way that as part of our registration for our cars yearly, we got a parking pass? And maybe, you know, from Princeville North, our pass is green, or a little sticker on our car that allows us resident parking at county parks? Where it's a designated lane zone that this is resident parking only. I know it's gonna be infiltrated with, you know, tourists and things like that. That's always gonna happen though. No matter what we do, we saw it during the flood too. People throwing passes around. It's shitty, but it happens. But it's not the majority. It's the exception of the rule. And so is that something that maybe we can entertain as an option for our communities that are being severely impacted by parking issues and all that? So, because I know it's not just Hanalei and North. It's happening in Pooipu, it's happening at, not so much Kealia because they get plenty, but, you know, these places where you have this little lot, and it's always been a little lot, but now it's gotten overrun. Is that potentially an option for us to explore even?
Yeah, it's, everything's, you know, we can explore. I don't know how it would just, it's definitely something.
Give them back the money.
Specifically where though, maybe? Anini, which, which, which are you, which locations are you talking about?
The big ones that I see is definitely Haiana Beach Park.
Yeah.
It's just blown out.
Yeah, you know, we are exploring the, the opportunity to include Anini in the KA model.
The Haiana Beach Park.
Haiana, what did you say?
Haiana Beach Park.
What did I say?
You said Anini.
I'm sorry, Haiana.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you, no, Haiana. We are in discussions with the state to basically have the state encompass Haiana. So that, that model would, would chance, would just be the same. It would, it would work for, for Haiana.
Also for, I mean, it rolls into the bay too and in the Blackpot.
Well, Lumahaw.
And Lumahaw is a different story.
It's a very good, you really don't want people there.
We really don't want people there.
I, you know, I, that's, I mean, that's definitely something we could explore. I'm not sure how we would, like you said, you know, the Turos would dominate and, and.
Not necessarily dominate, but it would be a factor.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll, we'll definitely, we'll definitely look at that. I mean, I, I really would, you know, when we do stuff like that, we got to get the data of how many, how many vehicles are there, what are local versus visitor and, and making sure that the demand is there. I have no doubt Hyena is there, no doubt about it. And I would love to see Hyena be like KA because that, that really, that's an amazing, but we knew when that happened, it would, it would just push the vehicles this way. Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Jimmy?
I don't know if you guys have talked about housing. Is that something the county is willing to consider? Like subsidize housing or building housing for county workforce or?
Cut off a certain percentage of Honolay from being turned into more, let more vacation rentals.
Well, there, there, there should be no more vacation rentals in Honolay, new vacation rentals because it's not in the VDA, the visitor destination area. We did do a resolution. Right now, the way the state law is, is the counties cannot amortize or end the TVR use in the single-family dwellings, so, that are not conforming. So what happened was in 2008, we passed a TVR law, which basically said no more TVRs going forward unless you're in a visitor destination area, which is Princeville, Lehuina, Wili, Poipu, where all the resorts are. But the, all of those that were operating legally prior to 2008, they had vacation rentals. They were paying their taxes. They were paying their TAT and general excise taxes. That we had to allow them to continue because they were grandfathered in. That's a constitutional right. So they had, you got to grandfather them in. Unfortunately, there's no mechanism to stop that use. So when that person sells the house, the new buyer gets the TVR, even though the law is very clear, no more new TVRs in a non-VDA area.
So then that lobbying change?
We are. We lobby that every year. We're up there again. We just, I just came back and Luke Eslin is championing the bill that is going to change that law and allow the counties. He sent me a copy just a couple of days ago. We did a resolution at the county council. We sent it up. So he has a bill that's going to allow counties to amortize, basically to end the use of TVRs in the non-VDA, I mean, yeah, in the non-VDA areas for the non-conforming uses. So eventually, as people sell their TVRs, that house, just the TVR now becomes a house. It's no longer a TVR. They cannot sell it as a TVR. That means the value of the property will go down, which means the neighboring property's values assessments will go down, taxes will go down, and the inventory will go up. But that's all we can do. But we are, we are bound by the state law. So again, you know, we need you guys to encourage you guys, the senator or representatives. We need to get that law changed. We need to be able to say no. And in fact, the law doesn't limit it to sale. We can actually amortize, the county could come out and say, we're going to amortize all of the TVRs in five years that are in non-VDA's and are non-conforming uses. But we cannot do anything until the state changes the law. So talk to Nadine, talk to Luke, talk to Dee, talk to Koche, talk to anyone at the state because we need, we've been lobbying that for every year as long as I can remember.
Well, then talk to your friends because it's a statewide issue.
It is.
If that's going to pass, it's going to be, it's going to be pressure from everyone.
There was no pressure, real pressure in the past. The Maui fire sparked. So we just came back from a state, it's so, I mean, all four counties are on board with this, this year. So the timing is right. But I tell you, when they get letters from you folks, it makes a difference.
It matters.
It makes a difference. They hear it from us all the time. But when it comes from the public, then they really, it's just, it's different. Even with us in the council, you know, it does make a difference. The testimonies do help. But that is critical. We got to get that fast. The lobby is strong though. The VRPO, the TVR, that, all of these lobbying organizations, they work very hard and spend a lot of money to convince our legislators to keep it as is, the, all of those. So you know, we got to be very aggressive. And that's why we did the resolution. So the public would be aware that this is what's going on. Once you sell, you sell. I mean, you know, that's how the next owner, you won't be able to DVR, but that's the only way.
Mr. Paul, I just want to clarify that if I could, you know, because to say we're only going to advertise, to say we're only going to advertise on sale, I think you need to look into the legalities because the same way here in Honolay, we have five boat permits. And it was supposed to go down to three when it was, when one person left the market through attrition, right? Four out of five permits all changed hands by now and there's no attrition. And the reason is because people put the boat permits into a corporation and then when somebody changes ownership of the corporation, then the permit doesn't change ownership. So I think you got to wonder if you do this with the TVRs, because there's a lot of money involved, then basically.
It's part LLC.
That's right. And so if you say we're only going to terminate when, when the owner sells, the owner will sell, but it'll still be in an LLC and so there will be no ability to terminate on that basis. So I think that when we talk about wanting to reduce the number of TVRs, if we get this change in the law, it has to be not just, we're gonna, as the county implements it. Don't just implement it upon sale because there won't be any sales.
It should be by year.
Implement it and you say, if you've owned, if you've had the luxury of having a TVR for five years, six years, whatever it may be, then, then you're amortized, whatever it is. I'm just, I'm just caution you because this is what's happened with the boat permits. Five was supposed to go down to three. It's five. It's always going to be five.
Yeah. Well, obviously, we ran into our legal department and the fact that they're not conforming.
Already.
Already. They're not, they're, it's not like the boats, that's an entitlement that they have. And it's a transfer. So I'm not, I'm not understanding when you say if they sell it, if they sell it or they transfer the ownership, it ends. It will end.
It doesn't with the boats.
Right. No, but for the TVR. The reason, the law, the language that we suggested in our resolution and the law that Luke has, has put forth doesn't say here. It says that the counties will have the authority to amortize the TVR use after a reasonable period of time. So the counties would have to determine what time period. But before you get to that time period, the county would be obligated to do an amortization study on those properties because it's going, we're going to have to determine, bottom line is we cannot, the constitutional taking is a real issue. So if we take the entitlement from an owner, then we took away revenue that they should have had, then we got to pay.
That's why you have to amortize.
And that's why you got to do the amortization study, which could take a couple of years to do and an amazing cost. So we'll see how it goes. We'll see. But I, I see what you're saying and the, once a property transfers, whether it's from a person to an LLC or from an LLC to another LLC, that transfer of property, in my opinion, would, would be the trigger for the end of the use. But yeah, we got a long way to go. That, that bill is going to go to the legislature. Ours was just a resolution. So we've got to, number one, we got to hope we get that passed. And then we got to figure out the legal ramifications.
So do, does the county have a mechanism to, do we know how many of those properties there are?
We have about 440, right? 420, 420 right now. That we know are. The island one. That, that's just the documented, that's, that are, those are properties that have a non-conforming use permit. There are many that are around that have no non-conform, they just operate. And again, it goes back to the enforcement, right?
The other way, the other way to say that is one half of all the houses in Honolay are in TVR use now. So when we talk about disasters and all of that, half the people that are in Honolay don't know what to do or where to go.
Yeah, well, you would hope that, that they get their little briefing card when they check.
We're trying. We're working on it.
I think, I thought we put that in the, in the bill. I can't remember.
We're still working on language.
Yeah, it's, you know, when you hear a siren, turn on your radio. That's what you need to do. Turn on your radio. Don't stay in your house.
Don't run towards the siren.
Yeah. Anything else? Anyone else have any issues or concerns? Thank you guys for coming. This is quite enjoyable, actually. Appreciate you guys.
We're not scary.
No, you're not. That's why I started with you guys because I figured, you know, if I can get through Honolay, then the rest is going to be a cakewalk, right? But again, if you folks have issues that, or you want to follow up on, just please stop in the back in C. Genel and we'll get your information and we will communicate directly with you. And the way we, the way we do it at the council is when we get a constituent concerned, as long as we have your contact information, we send you all of the correspondence between us and the responsible agency or department. So you're in the loop along the way. So you can just check with us and not have to think about who to call because it can get quite intimidating when you don't know who to call and, and you get passed on to different places, so.
Not intimidating.
Sure.
I thought one would.
Yeah.
Sneak Jimmy behind you here and leave a leg. Thank you. It's just more of moving.
Sure, sure.
Since my house is down here by Waoli Bridge, the cars coming off the bridge coming toward Honolay School, I think it's a raceway. There's no signage on speed limit. The only lump is in front of Honolay School now and that slows, sorry, people down a little bit. But that also goes for coming from Honolay School to Waoli Bridge. They just got it.
Speed limits from Honolay North need to be reevaluated.
Yeah, I mean, what is it here? Out here, no. Isn't it?
Everything's 25.
But you want it faster.
No, so.
You want to go.
Or 15.
On here?
Because people are going to go 25 when they say 15. But if you make it 25, I'm going to go 30 and 35.
No, how about if we make it 25 and we cite the people that are going 30 and 35?
If there was, if there was somebody sitting right there, right?
Yeah, and that, those are the kind of things that we can be the vehicle for, you know, we can make the request at KPD and they're very responsive when, when we ask, so. But again, you know, we, we got to.
Because once you leave, I mean, Calypso New East, now you're entering residential.
Yeah.
All the way through, right? So.
We will, what we do is we, Quay Police Department, they'll do a speed check. They'll, they'll come on and they'll bring their little things, their little.
Right.
Tools, a machine or whatever, the thing caught and it tracks what the average speed is, what's the fastest speed, what was the slowest speed.
They had it out at the market and they recommended 15 to 20 and they still put up a 25 mile an hour sign.
Okay, when is that done?
A year and a half.
On here.
Okay. Do your paper in.
Yeah.
Yeah, put that one on the paper and we'll follow up on that. Because if they already did the test, the study, then, then we can move forward. But, but I'll, I'll have them do one for right here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, sir? Are you a reporter or something?
No, new.
Oh, okay.
I'm listening.
Okay, he's like, is he a reporter? All right. Well, you know, folks, I appreciate this. I enjoyed myself. Thank you so much. And you know, today was a really rough day for me, man. From morning to, and I forgot my business cards. That's like the worst thing. So I'm really just, you guys, a lot of you know how to reach me. It's very simple. M. Reposo, first initial, last name, @quay.gov. And if you go to the county website, under county council members, click on me and I even have my cell number on there so you can reach me anytime. Appreciate you guys being here. And again, if you guys got any issues, concerns, questions, feel free to reach out to me. And thank you, Huiki, for covering this tonight for those of you at home.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, mahalo, guys, and very safe. We'll see you guys the next time. Aloha.